Good morning. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
Right.
Councilwoman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation today. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord, we come to you once again in the humblest way we know how. Come with bow ears and humble hearts, realizing that you're the authentic and finisher of our faithful God, and we ask that you continue to lead our mayor, this council, all department heads, that we may continue to serve the citizens of this great city of God. We recognize that our need of a Savior, God, and we thank you that the word tells us that plans are more likely to succeed where there's a multitude of council. So we thank you as we continue to work together, collaborating together, God. Gadsden will be made the better than we lift up this meeting before you today. Let your Holy Spirit lead in God and direct us in all our affairs. We give you every bit of the praise, the glory, and the honor in Jesus' name, all that agree. Say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meetings held on April 25th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of April 21st through April 27th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is reserved for proclamations and commendations. I see the mayor has one this morning.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. This is a special proclamation, and I'd like to ask Ms. Iva Nelson to come forward, please.[172.62][172.62](Laughter).[173.62][173.62](Applause). This is why we couldn't get you to sign this one.[184.01][184.01](Laughter).
I was like, I don't remember.
So this is Municipal Clerks Week. So this is from the City of Gadsden, Alabama, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time honored and a vital part of the local government exits throughout the world, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens and local governing bodies and agencies of government and other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and importantly rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as an information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state provisional county and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk, and now therefore I, Craig Ford, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, Alabama hereby join the Gadsden City Council in proclaiming April 30th, May 6, 2023, as Municipal Clerks Week. In City of Gadsden, I further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Iva Nelson, her dedicated staff, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community they represent. I've always been told we're all replaceable. I would like to say I was not replaceable.
Yeah, I agree.
But instead of me getting a picture with her, I know we would all like a picture with her, so after she makes her comments, we'll come up there, is that's okay with you, Mr. President?
Sure.
So if you notice, she hasn't signed it, so I asked Melissa how she gonna get it out and sign it.[305.11][305.11](Laughter). She goes, oh, she's the clerk, she'll figure it out.[308.14][308.14](Laughter). So Iva, if you'll say something, then we'll get a picture with you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. What a wonderful surprise to receive this today, and I do want to give a shout out to all clerks, not just Gadsden's clerk, but they really have a heart for their cities as I do, and we do strive to work as that link between the citizens and the government functions, as well as the council and the mayor, our elected officials. And I couldn't do anything without a wonderful staff, so I want to give a shout out to my assistant Jennifer, and Kristi, and Donna, and Ms. Julia, all of our staff members in the clerk's office. There are not a lot of us, but we do a lot of different things, and our tasks are very varied and very detailed, so I really appreciate their work, and I thank the mayor and the council for this recognition. Thank you so much.[365.84][365.84](Applause).
Get on up here, Jennifer. Well deserved.
Very much so.
I think this means somebody's gotta pay for your lunch today.[396.02][396.02](Laughter).
We have none today. So we'll go to item nine on the agenda. It's a resolution awarding bid number 3504 for the lease of 66 new two-seat golf carts for a 48-month term. The NAPA coordinator has recommended the bid be awarded to Yamaha of Hendersonville, Tennessee, and the amount is $75 per cart per month. The total monthly payment will be $4,950. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution awarding bids for 2023 nuisance abatement grass-cutting contracts.[484.46][484.46](Coughs) Excuse me. This is for grass cutting in each district as follows. Bid number 3505 for District 1, bid number 3506 for District 2, bid number 3507, District 3, bid number 3508, District 4, bid number 3509, District 5, bid number 3510, District 6, and bid number 3511, District 7. The city engineer has recommended these bids be awarded to ZLA Solutions, and the amount is, how do you say that, city engineer Heath, 48 cents per square foot?
Point 0040.
Point?
Half a cent, basically.
Half a cent per square foot?
Yeah.
No wonder I couldn't figure it out. Okay. Half a cent per square foot. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to elaborate a little bit on this. In the past, the city is responsible, not technically supposed to be responsible, but the city's responsible for any vacant lot that is owned by the state of Alabama. We, our Public Works Department ends up having to go cut that grass and maintain it during the summer, even though it's technically owned by the state, we have to maintain it because it's in our community. If we want it cut, we gotta cut it. And those lots total over 1,000, almost 1,200, I think, between city-owned lots and state-owned lots. So in the past, we've had a real challenge being able to keep up with all this, so what this does is for the first time, we're actually outsourcing that to a private entity that's gonna come in and maintain those lots in every single district, all seven districts. It's a new business. They've invested over $250,000 in new equipment. I think they've hired 15 people. They built a new maintenance facility, eight new trucks, a couple of dump trailers. So this is new jobs in the City of Gadsden, and it's gonna help keep our city beautiful. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Mayor Ford?
This is just a way of, in the past, that the lots weren't being able to get cut, and now that we're able to get them cut, even if it rains, they'll have a contract. So we've had complaints in the past of people's neighboring lots that were vacant, that the grass was being able to, it was growing, and now hopefully all non, all vacant lots will get cut in a timely manner. So if people's lots aren't getting cut, please notify our office, and we'll make sure that the grass will be cut, so keeping Gadsden beautiful.
I appreciate that. I will say for my first term that grass cutting is one of the top three or top five at least. Complaints from citizens because of just the unsightliness, and it causes animals to congregate, snakes, rats, vermin, things like that. So glad to see us take an aggressive stance on this. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 comes under the first reading heading. This is an ordinance amending fiscal year 2023 budget. This is related to Agenda Item Number 10 and transfers $217,654 from various public works expenditure accounts for the grass-cutting contracts. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. All right, item 12 is new business. I believe we have some items for new business today.
Yeah, Councilman Avery, you wanna go first? You can do the sports part with the security cameras.
Yeah, I just wanna trade with you because you can speak.
Okay, that's fine. I can handle, I can do them all, that's fine.
I'll do the, I'll go ahead. All right, so this is a request from the Engineering Department, authorized purchase of security cameras for Gadsden Sports Park. Just a measure to help alleviate along with being able to investigate for possibilities of graffiti painting and some things that have happened down at the sports park, as it happened in the Falls area and others. So this is a great addition to helping keeping that area monitored, budgeted at $17,937. I'm gonna ask to move this, to suspend the rules and consider this as an item of agenda today.
All right, we have a motion. Second. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Who did that?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Mr. President, I actually have a couple of things here. One is from the City Clerk's Office, authorizing a special use permit extension for T-Mobile. This is at 104 12th Street North in Gadsden, just over there by the McDonald's on 12th Street and Forest Avenue. This is allowing T-Mobile, or AT&amp;T, yeah, T-Mobile to add some additional satellites, I believe, and equipment to this cellphone tower here. So I'd like to ask for us to suspend the rules and consider this under new business today, please.
Second.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And, Mr. President, one more. This is actually from the Building Department. This is a resolution authorizing acceptance of a proposal from Johnson Excavation and Plumbing LLC in the amount of $23,750. The only thing unique about this is typically we would put any sort of work or bid like this out, or project like this out for bid, but because of the emergency nature of this, this concerns some structures that are unsafe and have a potential of collapsing and could be a public health issue. So with that in mind, we reached out and asked for a proposal, as is allowed by law, and we received that proposal. This will be to tear down multiple buildings on the, I guess that's West Meagan Boulevard over adjacent to Neal Code. There's, I think, three different structures over there, and again, the amount is $23,750 to Johnson Excavation and Plumbing to perform that demolition and removal of the debris. So again, I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this today under new business.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I believe that's all the new business, so we'll move to item 13, which is department reports, committees, and boards. We have any departments? Good morning, Josh.
Good morning. For a country boy, it doesn't get much better than this. It's a beautiful day outside, you got ribs waiting on you in the parking lot.[982.63][982.63](Laughter). I mean, it's just, Christmas comes early.
That's right.
This is Ms. Laura Stargel. She is going to be interning with the EMA for approximately 100 hours over the next, I guess, the next month. You're gonna try to get all 100 hours in. She's a senior at Jacksonville State University. Her minor is emergency management, and we're excited to have her volunteer with us intern, and we're gonna try to give her as much practical education as we can. So I wanted to get that out of the way first and give you an opportunity to meet her, because you may see her in the halls. So the other thing that I wanted to mention was Mr. Moore had tasked me with trying to find some different grant funding that was out there, that we might be able to do some of the projects with communications and a couple of different things. So there's currently three in the pipeline that I've done the due diligence on. We've had, Mr. Ramsey and I have had a couple of conversations about different grants. One of them is building resilient infrastructure in communities. This is a grant that most communities use for emergency generators, which, as we all know, is a need that we have. So that is, if you hear the acronym BRIC grant, that's what they're talking about. There are also gonna be opening up specific to, I guess, public safety would be the Department of Homeland Security Grants. Those grants can be used, they typically define three subheadings that they wanna focus on. One of them is always soft targets, and then one of them is interoperable communications. So as more information comes out about that, we'll be sure to pass that along to all of our partners. And then lastly, hazard mitigation funding. This is typically used for storm shelters, but it can also be used in areas that have flooding. A lot of different ways to mitigate things that are listed in our hazard mitigation plan. So I just wanted to bring those to your attention, let you know that those are out there, and more information will be coming soon. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
I wasn't able to make it. I heard of the success of the event. I had a driver emergency, so I had to go out and work. But I still have citizens that didn't receive because they're homebound.
Right.
Those 50 still available?
No, sir. We had them at the event.
Right.
And we ended up giving those out because there was still such a need.
Understood, yeah. And thank you. Yeah, the community stated very positive feedback on that event, so thank you all.
Absolutely.
Josh, I just want to know if you relate to our newest intern, that we don't allow tornadoes here, and we don't allow rain on the weekends. Did you tell her that?
Well, we covered that in the orientation.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
We covered that, so she's, if you actually have an opportunity to talk with her, Councilman Wilson, she has a pretty unique story that I'm sure you would find interesting.
I'd love, I'd love to spend some time with her. Maybe we can go on one of those intern runs to Cothrins for some doughnuts one morning.[1228.58][1228.58](Laughter).
You won't get any objections from the EMA staff, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to the City of Gadsden. Appreciate you being with us for 100 hours.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, any other departments? I believe Mr. Matthews, Howell Matthews is kind enough to stay with us from our pre-council meeting. Thank you. I know you've got a lot of stuff to do, so thanks for...
Thank you. I would just like to say that Councilman Avery asked me to come back up and speak. I'm Howell Matthews, Public Works Director for City. I touched on briefly in the pre-council, but since this is gonna reach more people going on television to the public, to the council, to the mayor, Jason Hill was gonna be here, but he's got an important task he's doing. I didn't share that a while ago, but he's in the process of putting up cameras in the districts. As a matter of fact, Councilman Avery, the first camera going up is on Cross Street in your district, so he and Mark Golden are working on that as we speak. I won't be able to articulate as well as Jason would on the topics he wanted to discuss, but I will go ahead and hit the high points with your permission. As I said, we're putting up multiple cameras in all districts. There's gonna be a lot of observation, so as a warning to the litter bugs out there, you need to stop it. We will catch you, we'll track you down, we will take you to court. Matter of fact, we have five scheduled for court today. We've got three convictions this morning with fines and community service. We're not playing around about litter in Gadsden. We've got two more going to court this afternoon, and we feel confident the results will be exactly the same. On the subject of fines, we have gone up in fines from $500 to $1,000 on littering. So that's a big chunk of money, I think, for any citizen in Gadsden who thinks that they'll just, it's gonna go away, or the city will pick it up. We might end up picking it up, but if we have a say to it, you'll be picking up the tab in city court. And also with the community service, we could get eight hours out of you for that. Couple of other items I'd like to mention. We were talking about brush earlier. If we can separate brush from trash, and when I say trash, that could be anything from an old sofa, whatever, end table, something that came out of your garage. Again, I would like to ask you, in order to clean up the city, give us a call. If you've got big items you want to put on the street, you know, you can go down to just about any district in Gadsden, and you'll find box springs and mattresses laying out on the curb. Give us a call, we'll come pick it up immediately instead of letting it sit there for days. It would be good, very helpful, and my recommendation is to the citizens, please put your trash in clear bags. If you're putting trash on the street, and we recommend that because if you've got windblown items, if the wind catches it, that turns into litter, that's just straight-up litter. It may be in front of your house when you dumped it out, but if the wind catches it, it goes in the neighbor's yard or down the street. So try to bag your material, and also try to put it in clear bags, and the reason for that, that is to dissuade scavengers from tearing open the bags and looking in it. So if somebody drives by, and they think they've got something they want to take from a bag or look through the debris, maybe they can see without tearing the bag open. That is, I think I hit all the topics right there, everything I wanted to mention. You're welcome to give us a call at Public Works, area code 256-549-4703, and call us if you have questions about anything I've mentioned, or if you've got some questions that I didn't bring up, a subject that I didn't bring up. But that's all I have. Counsel, do you all have any questions?
I just want to commend you and the Public Works Department, the mayor's office, and Tina King, who has responsibility of Public Works for the effort that's going on. I'm seeing a difference, and I'm seeing a difference not only physically, but I think in attitude, and I think people want a clean city. I think generally speaking, our citizens want to have a clean city, and I think we're all tired of the litter and the trash, and it's very disturbing when you see it and you know it's unnecessary. So I appreciate the effort and the cameras that Jason's putting out. Hopefully, we'll further curb that activity so we can have our city as clean as it can be, and we can all enjoy ourselves and our neighborhoods.
I know we all can if we just get on the same page with this.
That's right.
We can do it. And I want to thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for staying around with us. Any other department reports or committees or boards that are here? All right, we'll go to item number 14 on the agenda. It's a citizen request. This is a request from Robert Avery, attempt to meet with the mayor is his topic. Mr. Avery, if you will, for the record, if you'll state your name and your address, please, sir.
Okay.
And remind that there's five minutes, as you know, and Ms. Iva...
I won't.
Okay.
My name is Robert Avery. I live at 710 Crestview Drive in Gadsden. First of all, let me correct the agenda. If you notice, when I talked to you and the city clerk, I said the mayor and some council members, not just the mayor.
Okay, all right. That'll be noted, Ms. Iva.
If you remember that, okay. Just want to be sure. I'm here this morning to request a meeting with the mayor and some council members. I called his office several weeks ago and left word that I wanted to have a meeting with him with a few other people in the community. I got a call back after I left the message from one of his secretaries, and they wanted to know the topics of the subject. And at that point in time, I informed them, I don't know because there's a group of us. And I said, I just can't give you a topic, all the topics and the subject right now. Well, she said, okay, but he wanted to have the topics, topic or the subject so he could prepare whatever. 30 minutes later, another secretary called me, asked the same question, and like I told her, I can't give you the topics because, again, I don't know what everybody wants to talk about. It's just a group of us who wants to meet with them on some issues. She said, well, he can't meet with you. Oh, no, she didn't say that. She said, he wants to know the topics or the subjects. I said, good, I'll get back with the folks, and then I'll give you a call back. Well, it took me several days because it was a group of us to get some topics, and I called back and left word on the machine that I have the topics, and I haven't heard back from the mayor's office. So I just come here this morning to give him the topics that we want to talk about. And the list starts, one of the things was the dial-a-ride situation. I understand we got a problem with dial-a-ride. Someone wanted to talk about the Carver Center, the issues over at Carver. One wanted to talk about the water issues in the city. We had several people who wanted to talk about the land bank and the problem that they're having trying to access the land bank. One of the other things they wanted to talk about was the fact that downtown Gadsden and the commercial development gets over $200,000 in the city budget, and there was a request to get some other funding for other parts of the city where we have businesses located other than downtown. There was a major discussion about what's happening with nonprofits. Head Start, I understand, has been contacted about some cuts. You've had, a new thing came up this morning. I didn't know anything about the Challenger Center, who are requesting, it's a nonprofit, and I know the attitude about nonprofits, because the Northeast Alabama Challenger Center just had some issues this morning. The Alabama Northeast Black Chamber have had some issues of getting an audience in to talk with the mayor and some council members. I was glad to see all the council members show up this morning for that particular meeting, but didn't show up for the Black Chamber meeting, just the committee. One of the other things that came up, we discovered that in the proposal for the spending of aqua funds, there was a big mistake. of aqua funds, there was a big mistake. A big mistake. You've been telling everybody, or the city has been telling everybody, that there's a five-million-dollar project going on on Henry Street. And Henry Street, you can't do anything, you can do it the whole street for five million dollars on Henry Street. We found out that it was only fifty thousand dollars for Henry Street, so I want y'all to correct that and don't be telling people that we're doing a five-million-dollar project in District Three on Henry Street. Uh, so there's a number of other things that are coming up. Uh, so I'm here to give the subject what we wanna talk about, and I'm waiting to hear back from the mayor's office as to when we can meet with the mayor and those council members that we requested. With that, one other thing that just came up this morning, you talked about doing a mural on the walls, and I understand you're gonna get a artist from Dothen or something? John Sandrich, John Solomon Sandrich, is a world-renowned artist from right here in Gadsden. So with that, I'll just shut up and thank you for your time.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Avery. Before you sit down, I, I pulled the request to be on city council agenda, and is, Ms. Nelson, is this, do, do you generate this, or did this come from Mr. Avery? Okay, alright. Sorry for the, uh, misprint on the, uh, on the...
That's okay.
On the reason.
No, no, no problem. I just wanted to make the, clear the record up.
Okay.
It was the mayor and some council members, 'cause that's what I said when I called his office.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, next item fifteen is remarks by, uh, mayor and council. We'll start in reverse order. We'll go from seven to, uh, I'm gonna pick on you, I guess, Chris.
Great, great day. Go ahead.
No, I said, no, you, uh...
Just a great day, a lot of good information, learned a lot today. Uh, we're all doing, doing what we can to make the city better, uh, loving what's going on with the litter project. Getting those cameras up. If you do litter, you're gonna get caught, you're gonna get fined, you're gonna do community service. Other than that, can't wait to go outside and eat some of those ribs.
I was gonna ask you about, were you able to go to the, uh, event with the bicycles this weekend at Knocklough Falls?
I did go over there for a second. It was, it was really busy, good for, good for the, good for the City of Gadsden, all those people, kids and parents came in town and stayed in our hotels and ate our restaurants and a lot of people, and that's just a good thing they put on.
Is there like six hundred participants?
I think it's more than that, I believe.
Oh, really?
Six hundred a day, possibly.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so it's, it's middle school on Saturday and the high school is on Sunday. And they had good weather, they got some rain that one night, but by the next morning it was good to go, sunny, and everybody had a good time.
Good deal.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilwoman Monatra?
Um, yes, I just wanted to, um, give a big thank you to Jan Henson in the Building Department. Um, Jan's been working with me, and, um, we've been doing some, um, visits to, uh, District Six, specifically Walnut Park and the Mill Village, and, um, I, I would say that we've got some great partnerships, um, with animal control and with our police department, and we are making a difference. And so I wanted to give a shout-out to Jan and, and the animal control team, as, as well as the police officers that have been working. So, thanks very much.
Councilman Wilson?
Uh, yeah, I just wanna, um, elaborate a little bit on these camera systems. As some of y'all may know, we talked about this a couple of months ago, a group of us, um, from the council and the mayor's office and Chief Jaggers was nice enough to set up a tour that we did in Oxford of their, um, electronic monitoring center, center, monitoring center, uh, there, that, that ties together all these cameras they have all over the city of Oxford, um, and the technology that they employ and the impact it's had on the safety in their community is truly remarkable. So, yeah, I'm excited moving forward. I know a lot of these conversations about camera systems have been focused on litter, but I think this also adds a public safety component at, to help make this community a safer place for everybody. So, having these cameras installed at the Gadsden Sports Park, and like Mr. Howell said with Public Works, you know, putting these things out in our communities, not only are they gonna help to deter litter, but I think it's just the beginning of a larger program that's gonna help make this entire community a lot safer. So, I'm excited to see us moving forward with using technology to make our law enforcement officers' lives a little easier. Um, it's a very efficient way to, to make dramatic improvements in our community. Also wanna say congratulations to, uh, JSU graduates. I know they had their commencement this past weekend. That's a big deal. It's always a big deal in the restaurant industry, of course. We all experienced a big boom on, on graduation day. Everybody gets to go out and get their, get their dinner with the family, so congratulations to all those young folks and young professionals. I know that they're gonna have a bright future ahead of them. And, uh, just for what it's worth, um, my phone number, my personal cellphone number is two-five-six, three-nine-nine, three-seven-three-eight. I never missed a call that I didn't return, never not shown up to a meeting that I committed to. So, you, y'all have my number now, you can call me whenever you want to, I'm happy to speak with you at any time.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Avery?
Mr. President, um, just to, uh, dito off the, um, the litter and the cameras, so thank you for that team that is working hard and definitely on that. Um, so excited, I think, maybe out of all the council, uh, I've ordered the most cameras 'cause I'm, um, this is before I became a counselor, uh, seven years as a community organizer, and we've been, we've been commended from the governor's office, "Keep Alabama Clean," uh, a plaque awarded for our efforts. And the unfortunate is, is that we have people in our community that do not care. And so hopefully this will be an opportunity that we can shed light on those that don't care, and we'll see how much they care about that fine, or they, you know, care about the consequences and the repercussions, um, because it is very tiring when you get up almost every day and every morning to go out and pick up trash in your community in less than thirty minutes, it's right back out there. Um, and I don't, I firmly don't believe, and I've said this before, that I don't believe that it's people from our community. Um, and so whereas it is, um, uh, as equal opportunities, uh, I, I just really, uh, hope that this is an opportunity that we can, uh, pipe down the, the nonsense of litter. Alright, so with that said, I also want to shed highlight to, uh, District Three small business men and women. Uh, thank you for your dedication and your hard work, uh, the efforts that you continue to put as an entrepreneur in our city. Um, District Three is a unique, uh, area in our city. However, uh, there are small businesses that have been there for quite some time that continue, uh, to do the work at serving the community, uh, to provide for their family, have sent many of their children and grandchildren to school off that small business. So I want to encourage you, and as we, uh, are creating, um, from District Three, a, um, a committee to honor our small businesses, uh, next week we will, uh, announce our small business, uh, of the month. We was gonna do, uh, of the week, but we'll do a small business of the month, and we'll go and do a little something with them to highlight and shed some light to that small business. Community cleanup for District Three, uh, we are right now, uh, signing, uh, church organizations up, non-for-profit organizations, anyone that wanna be a part of those efforts. Those efforts will be June, July, and August. We have a, a, a large company, uh, that's in the state that is going to partner with us. Um, we have also, again, partnered with the governor's office and, um, and a local, um, community organization out of the county, I think it's Keep Edgewall Beautiful, um, that will be providing us the supplies and things that we will need. So don't worry, all we need is your vol- we just need your bodies and your, your, your energy. And so what we're, we're looking at, we don't have a, a, a specific date, uh, noted, notated yet, but we're looking at, uh, a Sunday of each month. Um, so we'll do one day in each month, go really, really hard, uh, you'll be fed, uh, we'll have fellowship, we'll have music, we'll have all those things and some resources out there as well. The whole, everything that we do, we want to also provide resources, um, to our community, uh, because we, we, we cannot, uh, receive enough. May the sixteenth, from twelve PM to twelve-thirty, we will have Coffee with the Cop. Uh, this, uh, event will be a, with the Senior Nutrition, uh, Program that is out at Carver Community Center. Uh, these are concerned senior citizens that's in our community that have some issues, uh, that they would like to speak with our police department about, or a member of the police department about, which is, so they're notified and to be present. Um, and so there's no agenda, um, there's, it's, it's just coming off the, off the cuff. Um, it's, uh, no agenda or speeches, just a chance to ask questions, voice concerns, and get to know your officers. This is very important, as I've always been a component, again, before council, as a commu- uh, as community policing, and that's one thing that we knew, uh, need with our unique, uh, district. Also, I wanna thank Lieutenant Keener and those officers that was on shift this weekend, uh, that helped, uh, mediate, uh, uh, some of the nonsense of racing on Tuscaloosa Avenue. This is a business district, which is kinda mixed residential very slightly, but it's a, it's a, it's not a wide or large street, uh, it's long in, in length and stretch, um, but for somehow, um, we became a mini Talladega Speedway. Um, that is very dangerous for the residents that live there, whom all are over fifty years old. It is dangerous for the kids that walk the street to a community center, or walk home, or go and play in the community, uh, that can easily be hit and killed. It is dangerous to your own well-being, and so I, I don't know how to, to address it any other way, and so hopefully also the camera system will help with that also, because this is just a situation that is getting out of hand. You ride down Tuscaloosa Avenue, you see, uh, tire tracks, tire marks all down the street. Um, and so I think Lieutenant Keener, again, and, uh, his staff that, uh, were able to help, uh, patrol a little bit, uh, more on Tuscaloosa Avenue this weekend. Thank you so much. I think yesterday was Principal's Day, or, or last week, one of these, one of these, no, yesterday, it's Monday, uh, was Principal's Day. And so want to definitely give a shout-out to all of the principals that go in each and every day during the week, uh, to, uh, encourage, motivate, and, and be a leader to our young men and women, uh, who are not our future for tomorrow, but our future for today. District Three Community Meeting, lastly District Three Community Meeting will be next Tuesday, um, at the, uh, Community Civic Center here on, uh, downtown Gadsden. Uh, we will start promptly at six-thirty and go to seven-thirty. Our community topics, of course, we'll heavily about the Community Cleanup Day and the strategies that go with it. We will talk about the historical sites that we're registering in, uh, District Three. We'll talk about, uh, Sixth Street Pool, we'll talk about the cameras, uh, we won't talk about the placements of cameras, um, um, i- i- if to be so, because at the end of the day, uh, where we have given enough verbiage out to those people that are, uh, putting out trash to please stop or to call, uh, certain numbers and where to go dump, uh, the time is now to be caught, so cameras will be talked about, but not placement. Uh, police presence, and then the land bank, uh, which has been, uh, I've gotten many calls about it, and so we're asking for, I'll get, uh, an informal, um, uh, email to, uh, city clerk, and then hopefully we'll have those department heads that will come out and speak professionally to, uh, the concerns of the citizens that have been addressed. Thank you, I yield the remainder of my time.
Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a great day in the City of Gadsden, y'all. Great things are happening, and so I just wanted to just tell everybody, thank you. I wanna thank our mayor and being progressive, um, his staff. We're only six months in, but, you know, you can run through our city and tell somebody is leading the city. See roads being paved, industry coming, jobs are coming. We're cleaning up the city, uh, building chemistry. The mayor is doing his job, and the council, we're doing our job. It's only six months that we've been in office, and I don't know about you guys, but I'm super excited to be in Gadsden, Alabama, right now. Have a good friend of mine just moved back here from Mississippi. He'd been gone sixteen years. He told me he couldn't wait to get back to Gadsden, so wave your hand, it was Pastor Smith. So I just wanna encourage us, uh, all that's here, those that's watching, stay tuned, retailers are coming, jobs are coming. We, as a council, you know, we're acquiring new properties, positioning ourselves for the future, so again, thank you Mayor Ford, your staff, the city council. We just appreciate, uh, what's going on, all department heads. I'm excited about what the future holds for Gadsden. Congratulations, Ms. Iva, so deserving. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilwoman Latham?
Thank you, uh, President Beck. Uh, let me start by thanking, um, and to just kinda come off of Councilman Smith, to thank, um, Mayor Ford and his office, uh, and the department heads for the system that is in place for concerns and complaints, the fast response that we see, uh, when we ride the district and when we ride our community. And I say that contrary to popular belief, um, when I'm riding District One, uh, you see, uh, the requests that have been put in, the concerns that, uh, the constituents have, those things either being worked on, having been completed, or in the process of being done, and so let me say, uh, thank you for that, and it is a good day to be a part of what's going on in Gadsden, and we believe that better is to come. And let me say congratulations to, uh, Ms. Iva. Uh, thank you, uh, for what you do to keep us, uh, going, as well as to meet deadlines, 'cause some of us are procrastinators, and we appreciate it, we appreciate it. So, uh, let me say this to District One, too. I, I wanna say this, uh, it feels good when you see, again, contrary to popular belief, when you see people in the district, uh, take a concern for their district. So I say to District One, thank you for taking ownership and really working, uh, to be your neighbor's keeper and making sure that we are doing our part to make District One better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanna, uh, I have a thank you again, uh, for what you do, and the, uh, just a quick story, the first couple of weeks I was here, I remember saying, "I wanna get all these appointments." I have the first couple of weeks, and I didn't know I had you here till eleven-thirty, and I thought, "She'll never like me for the first four years." Uh, but thank you for what you do. Uh, of course, I wanna thank all the employees, but today I wanna thank the mayor's staff, uh, for what they do. They're here, sitting on the first few rows, and, and, uh, I told them the day that when we were meeting, I said, "I wanna thank y'all for what you do, and, uh, I know y'all allowed, the council allowed me to hire additional people in the mayor's office, and trust me, uh, they, we're getting a bang for our buck for the tax dollar." Uh, but I can't, I cannot do what I do today without them, and, and they do a great job. Uh, I wanna thank our first responders. I was talking to the police chief earlier. We, y'all have allowed us to raise the pay of first responders, and I was talking to our police chief. Our, our fire and, uh, police have had their pay raised, not enough, of course, uh, but our police are being paid twenty-plus dollars an hour starting out, and I asked, uh, Police Chief Jaggers, I said, "How's that compare to the other counties?" And he said, "Two of the five counties, we're above average." He said, uh, "But, you know, maybe, uh, Oxford and St. Clair County, they may have us a little bit." He said, "But we're getting up there." So we're getting there, uh, so we wanna get the word out, and we have twenty spots available in both fire and police or more, so we need more first responders. If you've been noticing on our social media, uh, I've been, uh, ordering some blitzes in some neighborhoods, Mill Street, uh, Mill Street, Mill Village, and, uh, Walnut Park, uh, no particular order. I wish we could go in every neighborhood, it's simultaneously, uh, but we have attacked these areas for homelessness, animals, uh, and whatever have you, but, uh, you would not believe how many people can get ahold of me in different forms and fashion, uh, messenger, Instagram messaging, I didn't know you could do that, and everything, and I return them all hours of the night. I was, uh, texting the president of the council till last night, till wee hours, and, but I love it, and if it's legit, now, we get a, a lot of messages that are just kinda crazy, I'll just be honest with you, uh, but a lot of people are really watching out in their neighborhoods, and it's amazing to see in your district the people that are taking care of, they want what's best for their area, and it's just, it's amazing to see these people wanna take pride in Gadsden. And you would not believe what our first responders have uncovered, the arrests they've made, the help assisting people. Uh, it's not all about arresting and taking people to jail, it's also helping the disabled, uh, getting rid of the animals and getting the animals adopted, and, you know, get, taking care of an unsafe situation. So to Lamar and Chief Ree, thank y'all for what you've done. Uh, I'll just go ahead and tell the, the, let the bad people know, uh, we're, we're not stopping, we're going into another neighborhood here soon, uh, and like someone said, "We don't tell you where we're going, but we're coming, uh, and we're gonna hit 'em all," and then we're going back again, and we may go back in an area that we've already been, so you don't know. Uh, one thing we've, uh, committed on when we ran for office, Convention Hall is coming down. Uh, hopefully by Friday it will be gone, uh, so that helps us market that property and helps us with orchestra partners in our development of what we're trying to do. Uh, by Friday, hopefully it'll be done for the Memorial Day bash. Uh, we are posting a position for the Gadsden Airport Authority Executive Director, uh, this week, uh, so hopefully that'll be, uh, being taken care of. We're gonna have a director, a long time coming. Uh, the police is focusing on hotspots continuing with the crime and the, uh, and the animals or humane society. I s- I did see our director out there earlier, I'm not sure where he went, but things are headed in the right direction, and I wanna ask everybody, the police have patience with this, uh, the animal situation. The animal situation didn't happen overnight, and it won't get cured overnight, so, but we are heading in the right direction, I promise you. Brett Johnson, I want to thank you and Chief Reed and our Gaston firefighters for the Fire Career Tech Program. Y'all, it doesn't sound too, I don't want to say sexy, but snazzy, you know, but it, it's a big deal. The Gaston City High School seniors are learning about a career technical program to how to become a fireman, and it's about fire service and recruiting, and we've already got some students coming out of high school wanting to become a paramedic, and we're losing paramedics, and this is a big deal for our first responders and what we're offering to our community. So this, stuff like that makes a difference in your community. And Pastor, welcome home, we're welcome to have you, stuff like that's what I want to hear about, and, and we work for you. So I want to say that to you, to the gentleman earlier that spoke about not having a meeting. I want to thank you for bringing all of that to, to my attention this morning. I made the notes of the issues that you presented, and I will definitely take that under advisement. The first meeting that I was made aware of that you requested was for $2 million for a Chamber of Commerce. We requested some audits and some information, and I have to be a good steward of tax-paying dollars, and I cannot locate you, but if I don't get audits and I don't get documents of stuff that I need, how many of you think it would be good to give any organization $2 million if I don't have any documentation of audits or anything? Raise your hand. Okay, I didn't think so either. So once I secure that information, I'd be happy to be able to look at anything, but we're coming up on budget season. And I'd be interested in looking at anything that anybody has for a program that's worthy of a cause to be able to give some donations to, or anything to help get something off the ground that's a worthy cause. I will meet with any group at any time. We have multiple meetings all day long. We double-book meetings, to be honest with you, so I can hop from meeting to meeting to meeting. We will conduct a meeting with whoever wants to at the appropriate time. However, I do need to know who we're meeting with, and it's not because I have a Crown or a Tierra, it's because I need to know which department head I need to have in the meeting at the appropriate time, because I don't know everything. If it's regarding Dollar Ride, then I need to have Steve Partridge with Transportation at that meeting, because what I don't want to do is have a meeting to have another meeting. If it's regarding Parks and Rec, I need to have Jen Worthington at the meeting. So when we talk about Parks and Rec, I can have Jen Worthington at the meeting to discuss what the issue is and the problem is. So that is the only reason we ask in my office, what are we going to be talking about at the meeting? So please understand that, that's the importance of the meeting, why we're asking, and now that we know that, we are going to grant this meeting because I represent you and I serve you, but we'll try to confine it down to three issues, because one issue sometimes turns into an hour, but we'll try to do three, three, and three, and three, and we'll just keep going till we knock them all out, okay? But I agree, like with Pastor Steve, he's going to do my funeral because I'm on Level One, and if he does it, I'll get to Level 10. But Gaston is a good day, and, and this is a great day to be your mayor, and I thank you for allowing me to serve you, and welcome to Gaston.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Just want to echo the sentiments with Municipal Clerk Court Week. Thank you, Ivan Nelson, for your leadership in that department and your 39 years of serving the citizens of Gaston. It's amazing we hired you when you were six years old, but I don't think we could do that today, could we? I don't think that's permissible, but thank you for, for your leadership and what you do. Back a couple of months ago, I had, we gave a commendation to Ms. Peggy Butler. She was, had, was been honored in Birmingham for her 75th anniversary of being named Miss Alabama. She was Miss Alabama in 1947, and she's from Alabama City. Well, Sunday morning, Ms. Peggy went to be with the Lord, and I just wanted to share that with our, our city and our town. She was just a, a great lady, a fellow church member, and was just the nicest person that you could ever meet, and so just wanted to share that with everybody, and just thoughts and prayers are with her family. You know, we have about 600 or so full-time and part-time employees in the city of Gaston, and it is difficult when you single somebody out, but I'm, I'm, I'm going to do that, because I think it's, it's deserved. And I'm going to start with a quote from, from this employee. He writes to me, "21 years and seven months. I made a lot of friends through the years, and I don't know where I would be today if Sandy Battles hadn't hired me as a 19-year-old kid. Thankful for all the city has done for me through the years, the city gave me a chance when no one else would. What makes this all more special is that Dusty Wright has cerebral palsy." You know, Dusty could have stayed at home, he, he didn't have to go to work. But Dusty chose to go to work, he wanted to go to work. He had worked in high school, he was a manager of the football team at Edgewall High School and was very active in, in all of his high school days. Dusty's been a productive citizen and has accomplished many of his dreams and goals just like anyone else. Anyone that's ever been around Dusty Wright will tell you, he represents the best in all of us. Dusty works hard, he's got a great attitude, an even better sense of humor, and he really cares about people. Dusty is now 40 years old and retired, and he's embarking on a new season in his life. He's a homeowner, and he owns rental houses, and he also takes care of his mother. He has more friends and admirers than one can imagine, and I'm proud of Dusty for showing us how to overcome adversity with hard work, determination, and never giving up on his dreams. I know many of you know Dusty, and many of you worked with Dusty. I'm kind of late to the Dusty Wright party. I really only met Dusty a few years ago when I got on the city council, but when I met him, I felt like I'd known him forever. He's just that, that kind of guy. So Dusty, I, I don't know if you're watching, but if you are, thank you. Thank you for your 21 years and, and seven months that you gave to the city of Gaston. And on that high note, we will be adjourned.
Mr. President, can I say one?
Oh, yes, sir.
I apologize.
That's okay, Councilman Smith.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bill Avery, I don't, we don't have any advertisement up here about your event, but I do want to make mention of your event coming up on May 19 at the Gaston Amphitheater, and I want you to know that we do support what you are doing, black and the white community. I know it's for everybody. So thank you for being here, but I did want to make sure I mentioned that before you left. Thank you, Ms. Avery.
And Mr. Beck, I want to thank Billy Billingsley for serving as the Airport Director for all those years.
Okay, yes. Thank you, Mr. Billingsley. Thank you. We adjourned.